Good evening, everyone. The regular notice requirement of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act has been complied with in that adequate advance notice of this meeting was given at least 48 hours in advance. On March 16th, 2023, notice was mailed to the Carrier Post Philadelphia Inquirer and posted on the district's website. Would everyone please stand for the pledge allegiance? Thank you much, and at this time, let's prepare for a roll call, please.
Ms. Alvarez, Ms. Gillespie, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Hudson, Ms. Jackson, Mr. Lebo Martinez, Ms. Merricks, Vice President Nelson, President Mohammed, we do have a quorum this evening. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to go into closed executive session for matters of individual privacy, disposition, and acquisition of real property, as well as other matters defined as attorney-client privilege. Do I have a motion, please? We have a motion, do we have a second? We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, the time is now 5:32, and the board will be going to close the executive session for approximately 45 minutes. We're expected to return approximately 6:15. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you again for your patience this evening. For our board members, at this time, I will take a motion to return to open public session as of 6:36 PM. Do we have a motion? We have a motion by Board Member Gonzalez, we have a second? And we have a second by Board Member Lebo Martinez, all in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, we are now in open executive, open public session, excuse me, as of 6:36 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to be changing the order for our agenda this evening, and we are now going to turn it over to our student representatives to report out from each of their respective schools. At that time, following the report out from our student representatives, we're going to go into public comment at that point. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Deanna Fuchs, I'm representing Camden High School, and I'm a senior. One thing that I believe that we have improved on, I think it's two things, one being the lunch, but I think that goes hand in hand with you guys listening to our voices, because that is something that we've been voicing to you guys. And one thing that I think we can improve on is communication, just with the faculty, the students, and the staff altogether.
Hello, my name is Jacque here Dean, and I'm representing Big Picture Learning Academy. To start off, a positive that our school has shown is its relationships with our teachers and the staff. I feel as though our school especially has to encompass the virtues of relationships, because throughout these hard times, especially with this generation of students, being able to interact with one another and build relationships with both friends and family is really important. So I feel as though the relationships aspects of our education has improved. For negatives, I would like to say, our school is, as a whole, our school needs to be better maintained. Every morning, both staff and students are walking into floors that are barely swept, bathrooms that are not cleaned properly, and for my school especially, both of our bathrooms are out. One toilet in my side of the building has been inoperable for over a year now, and that should be fixed, and that's unacceptable. Like I said last meeting, this is a multimillion-dollar school, and it should be treated as one.
I gotta say my name? I gotta say my name? I don't know. Oh, hi, I'm Tanaya Evelyns, I'm a senior at Brim Medical Arts. Some of the glow, glows of the school is definitely like, as Deanna said, like the food, but I will say like one aspect is very small about the food, is like, the stuff is being served on, like the plates and stuff get like really greasy, so like you'll have grease coming through the plate, and it'll be on your table, and it's just like not fun. Another thing I would say needs to be, oh, a good thing is, we have all our teachers now. So we have like our math teacher that was missing, the English teacher, so we're now fully like staffed with all our teachers. And we have like enough substitutes to go around, so if a teacher is absent, we do have a sub on hand. A negative of the school is like, the school is like kind of falling apart, because we have three or four panels in the ceiling missing, and the other day we had an antifreeze like dripping from the ceiling, so we couldn't go like past that hallway, they had us in like a sheltering place until it stopped leaking. One other thing is like definitely the bathrooms and stuff, like Jacque here said, but another thing is like, Deon? Deon? Hmm, Deanna, said is communication, like, the whole like graduation thing, which I feel like everybody would probably speak on later, but like the combined graduation, none of us really want it, like you asked us in the beginning of the year if we wanted it, and we all said no, but trying to combine the graduation is not something that we want as a campus, especially since like each school has their own thing, like personally for us, like at Brim, we had a classmate pass away during the COVID, like our sophomore year, so we wanted to honor him during our graduation, but if you guys do combine like the graduation, we're not going to be able to do that, like where would the time go?
Thank you very much for, as always, for your comments, your concerns, you always share so openly, so honestly, regardless of whether there's one person in the room or many people, you always come as student board reps, and you speak your truth to power. So again, we want to thank you for consistently representing the voices of your student body and for sharing in such an eloquent and very powerful way. I'll open it up at this time to, to get over to the board president, to see if any board members would like to address this issue.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent, we appreciate our young people too as well. Any board members that have any comments or questions or concerns? Thank you.
Yeah, good evening. Students, I just wanted to let you know, keep sharing what you're sharing every time you guys come, those things are not going unheard. Me and a few of our colleagues from the board did visit some schools to taste the lunch as well, and the lunch was pretty good, so, so a big shout out to the, to the team that's making sure that that's happening, Ms. Alitha Wright and her entire team, but students, just continue to come and don't be afraid to share everything and anything that you think can help you with the education and your time here, thank you so much.
Thank you, Board Member Martinez. Any other board member that has a comment, question, or concerns? Board Member Gonzalez?
I won't reiterate what you guys repeated, and I side with Falio regarding the school lunches and the progress they were making. I would say to you guys, and I would say to the superintendent, that throughout the trajectory of 10 years, we have closed several schools down, and one of the main reasons that it has been promoted for closing them down was the poor maintenance that we had, historically had with those buildings. And if we're having these issues with a brand-new building, just got built yesterday, then we can already see the trajectory of where the entire district will be going in just a few years. So we, along with them, I would ask that we prioritize these small issues of maintenance to address them and to avoid what we have, again, witnessed within the past 10 years, closing down a lot of our schools because of the poor maintenance that it has historically had. That's all.
Thank you, Board Member Gonzalez. Board Member?
I just want to thank you guys for showing up, yet again, I think I thanked you the last meeting, I appreciate the notes that you guys take, I appreciate the care that you take with your schools. I also would like for you to charge yourselves and your classmates, while also doing some general housekeeping as well, do you know what I mean? We are all able-bodied folks, and with our big bodies and our big ages, so hold your friends accountable too, if you see them, you know, hey, throw that in the trash, that don't go on the floor, you know what I mean? Hey, why are you writing on the desk? We just got those, so help us, help you, to help us, help you, you know what I mean? We don't know, again, what we don't know, but you guys are on the ground, you're our eyes and ears, so don't be afraid to hold your peers accountable as well, okay? Thank you.
Thank you much, appreciate it. Is that it? Before I turn over back over to the districts, I share the same sentiments that our school board members are sharing with you, continue to do what you're doing, thank you.
Before we go into, thank you, Board President, before we go into a public comment, again, we've adjusted because we are responsive, we understand that our young people have to get back to their homes and get ready for tomorrow, because we want you all to come back to school bright-eyed and ready to learn. And again, I did not state that this, but you know that everything that was shared, we're going to go back and ensure that we're responsive to what you've shared with us. So when it comes to the facility, we know that specifically in this building, we've had many issues, some are due to maintenance, and we will adjust and do what we need to do to respond appropriately. Some of those issues in the building are just due to the fact that we've had issues with this building since it was built, and for a new building, some of the things that are occurring should not be. So whenever there is an issue, this is to the board and to the public, as well as to you as students, whenever there's a concern that has to do with a building defect, or you know, something that's outside of our control, we also make sure that we report back through the school business administrator, to the school's development authority, to the head, Mr. Manny De Silva, and we provide that information, and we continuously do that over and over as different issues come up, floods, antifreeze leaking, things that are just outside of our control, we do that, so because we want to make sure, one, as a district, if we're putting out money, we're reimbursed, because it's not our fault, but also that we're making sure that as buildings are built, because we also want to make sure we lobby for a new East Side High as well, that we're building schools that, not we are building them, the state is building them in a manner that is, is making sense, and in a manner that is going to be free of some of the things that we have been seeing. So what you're sharing is very helpful, we will deal with the maintenance side, we'll also deal with the side that comes through SDA, or anyone else who was involved in building certain pieces of this building, but just want to make sure you know your words haven't fallen. Communication, we will work with our leaders through our various teams that support our leaders to ensure that our communication is better in schools, and we will, again, address all of the concerns that, that you've shared around maintenance, because we are concerned, you deserve the best, and we're going to do what we need to do to make sure that you get it. Thank you. Onto the general counsel, so that we can move right into our public comment portion.
Good evening. The Camden City School District welcomes the attendance and comments from all members of the public at its meetings. This public comment period is your time to present your comments to the board and the Each person who signed up to comment will have three minutes, you'll be notified when your three minutes are up, and you cannot yield your time to another person. When it is your turn to speak, please come up to the podium and address all of your comments to the superintendent or general counsel. Please be courteous to your fellow community members, and keep your comments within the three minutes, so that everyone has the opportunity to speak. At the end of the three minutes, the microphone will be cut off. We also request that you please conduct yourself in a respectful manner, the First Amendment is not absolute, and the board can prohibit language that is inappropriate. For anyone whose comments or actions harass, intimidate, or threaten the safety of any person, we will provide you with a warning or immediately end your comment time. We will not interrupt you during your three minutes unless we deem it necessary. If a member of the public speaks about a staff member, interruption may be necessary to caution the speaker of the danger of slander. After the public comment period is closed, the superintendent or her designate may address your questions to the extent provided by law. I will begin by calling the names of the individuals wishing to provide in-person comments first, and then I will read the written submissions from this evening. And as a quick reminder, all written public comments read aloud during the board meeting are the views of the person submitting public comment, and are not the views of the superintendent, the advisory board, or the Camden City School District. Thank you. We have a somewhat lengthy list this evening, so please bear with me, and I apologize in advance if I mispronounce anyone's names. The first commenter is Karen Borelli.
I'm sorry, before we begin, we have a New Jersey tag, H5A MUY, White Honda Altra, you are blocking somebody, you need to remove your card.
Good evening. Karen Borelli Luke, Dr. Charles Brim Medical Arts High School. Each of our, our high schools are unique, most districts wish they had our magnet schools with specialized focuses and infusions. I was part of the planning committee for this campus, I continually questioned the motive of merging four high schools. Time and time again, I was assured each high school will maintain their identity, yet, here we are, merging prom and urging for one graduation for all four schools. Each school has their own traditions, own valedictorians, salutatorians, not one staff member or student wants one graduation. Whose idea was this? Was there a planning committee? Did this include representation from all four schools? Class advisors, not just senior class advisors? This was an adult decision that does not have the student and building's best interest. This is one battle we do not need to add to our plate. On another note, Larry Blake, our CEA first VP, unexpectedly passed away last week. Larry was many things to many of us, may his spirit and vision live and continue in all those lives he impacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Borelli. The next speaker is Dejanae O'Witcher.
Hello, my name is Dejanae Witcher, and I'm a senior at Camden Big Picture Learning Academy. I stand in unity with those opposed to having a single graduation. Coming into high school, most of us were excited to be in a new environment with new people, we created friendships with our peers and bonded with our teachers. This was cut short due to COVID, we were forced to complete our first and second year of high school on a screen. Many of us struggled and were ready to go back to school in person. Junior year, we were forced into a new building, it was a struggle to be in a building with people we barely knew, there were fights, drama, and lockdowns throughout the whole school year. The school board tried to force the identity of Camden High into four separate schools, we've remained calm and persevered through this. Now the school board is trying to force us to have graduations together. The identity of four separate schools shouldn't have to be forced into one, if students come first, we should decide our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Witcher. Next speaker is Andre Skines.
Hello, my name is Andre Skines. My name is Andre Skines Jr., I'm a senior at Camden Big Picture Learning Academy, I stand in unity with the seniors across the Camden High campus against merging the graduation for the class of 2023, because we voted for prom together, and for graduation to be separate, for our voices to be heard, and our votes to be heard, but they wasn't. Because apart from this, not just one school, but not one school or person told parents about the separation, it doesn't make people or anyone feel special combining them, because we won't be able to celebrate like certain individuals, I feel like there's a lot of gray areas in this situation, and because all in all, I don't think like any of us like don't like each other, but we all have different type of celebrations, or like different type of like things that we do that makes us, you know, special in our own type of way, and I feel like that won't be shared if we all combine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skines. Next speaker is Gary Frazier.
Believe it or not, first I want to say to those students, thank all those students who came out to advocate on behalf of what you want, part of fighting for yourselves is being able to create a voice for yourselves, that puts you in the space that allows for your collective body to hear you. Also, we're reaching the end of Women's History Month, I just want to take the time to acknowledge all the women here in the room, our advocates here, those who got honored today, those who didn't get honored today, those who will continue to do work here in our city for our people. But I want to spend this last couple of minutes, because I haven't been before a school board meeting in quite some time, and the last time I left, oh, we were at war. I was going to advocate for our students and their schools, and then subsequently I lost my child. Very bitter time for me, had to take some time away from things, but I am here today because I remember, I remember who was there, I remember what it was like, going through what I was going through, and superintendent, I just wanted to take this time to thank you. Thank you for all of the wraparound services that you put around me and my family, to help us get into a space where I can learn more coping skills, and I'm just grateful for the person that's turning me into today, and being 48 years old now, going into the later stages of my life, I just want to dedicate my life to continuing serving Camden, inside of Camden, outside of Camden. I also wanted to thank you for extending the efforts over into Collins Wood Middle School and High School with the superintendent over there, as those students battle with some things that they're going on in racism over at that school, I thank Camden for being a beacon and outstretched their arms to at least offer conversation and offer a space where we could actually sit down and offer some of the resources that we have here into those other areas. A lot of our children, they come from Camden, and they often transition out into these neighborhoods. In Collins Wood, there are a number of five schools over there, and I know personally a lot of the students over there have had a chance to meet with a number of them over there, and had a chance to really advocate for them on their behalf, and so I just want to once again thank this collective body, Minister Yacine, also for, you know, giving me the wraparound services that I needed, along with the Camden, you know, the administration at Camden, it was a very tough time, Nam for being there and continuing being there, just reaching out to me and just making sure I'm out, those things matter to me, regardless of what side of aisle we stand on, it shows integrity, it shows that we don't have to agree all the time, but that we can come together when people are faced with some of the things that I've been faced for, so I've never gotten the chance to really formally thank you, and I just wanted to do that amongst the body, and also to say to our students right here, your voices are very big, and you need to-
Thank you, Mr. Frazier.
-channel those voices. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Donna Irons, thank you.
Thank you, good evening, Superintendent Combs and Vice President Mohammed, and, I'm sorry, President Mohammed and Vice President Nelson and other serving board members, my name is Donna Irons, and I am a proud science teacher at Creative Arts High School in Camden City, New Jersey. I'm also the current senior advisor of the class of 2023. And so as an advisory representative of this student body, I stand in unity with the seniors across the Camden campus against the merger for graduation. For this student body, our major concern relates to how the decision for a unified graduation occurred despite the overwhelming responses from students and non-agreement to it. It is certain that tonight you will hear statements of disappointments from parents and students relating to how their wishes appear to be disregarded. As a parent of three Creative Arts alumni, I must say that it was always a pleasure to see my sons who grew up in Camden City commence with their peers, peers who they shared the refinement of learning through the creative and performing arts. And so, and I'm confident that parents of Brim and BPLA and Camden High and what we call Woodrow Wilson, which is now East Side High, they share the same sentiments. As a matter of fact, as a Camden resident, having been a Camden resident, I'm aware of the pride that goes along with the purple and gold, but consider this, those of you who are purple and gold, you commenced privately with your peers without that of those of black and orange. We only hope to do so with our children, consider this cohort, that they who haven't been the ones who sacrificed through the pandemic, had to go through things socially and emotionally, right? They had to acclimate to being in this space, and those who this space was promised to, for the students who were already here, they had to adjust to the students, new students in their space. So our hope is that the cohort of students who already, I'm sorry, as an educator who teach the civic duty, to allow the process of the governing body of leadership to hear, and more importantly, listen to the concerns of those that they are in servant leadership to. You will hear a collective voice of concerns regarding the decision, or this decision to merge, the lack of clarity for how it was made despite the data and feedback, and more importantly, listen to the concerns that, with regards to the critical reasons for the disagreement for merged graduation. It is our hope that what you hear, you will truly listen to and reconsider a unified graduation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Irons. Next speaker is Anaya Coleman.
Hello, I'm Anaya Coleman, I'm a senior dance major at Creative Arts High School, and I stand in unity with the seniors when I say we are against the graduation merging. We were asked if we wanted to have a graduation together, and 80% of the seniors said no. Then the complete opposite of what we asked is happening, which is taking away each student's voice. Each school has worked hard to get where they are, and they need their culture back. Each school has their own traditions at graduation, and if we murder them, those traditions will be lost. The students are being stripped of their relationships, creativity, and opportunity to be themselves. We're not an experiment, and I'm pretty sure that everyone sitting on the stage has had their own graduation, and we would like the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coleman. Next speaker is Nancy Lopez.
Sorry, Nancy had to leave for rehearsal, so she was going to speak on her behalf, but she did sign up to speak, so she has a spot to speak.
Great, okay, thank you. Well, just skipping, and actually, Ms. Dickerson, you are the next person signed up to speak.
All right. All right. Good evening, Superintendent, President, VP, and everybody on the school board, Rasha Dickerson, parent in Camden City, I've been a parent in this school district for over 20 years, so I got some skin in the game, but I'm excited to see these students here organizing their voices, and they did this organization on themselves, and it's nothing personal, it's more so that I heard some rumoring about it's a cart before the horse. It's not that a decision hasn't been made, it's that they don't want a decision to be made, right? It's not that they don't feel like they have an opportunity to do something well on this campus, it's that they're showing you across the campus, regardless of all the things you hear about the lockdowns and things like that, these students figure out a way to come together and speak one voice, and that needs to be commended tonight. That needs to be commended tonight. The second part of it is, is that it is a cart before the horse, because we had an opportunity to make this Camden High School campus Camden High School campus, and it could have been a school of medicine, the school of the arts, the school of things, we would have had a better merger and would have been appropriate to have a graduation that looks like that, but now we don't have that, so let's start with small steps, so we can get to the bigger goal. So I just wanted to just commend the students and let them know that we're here for them as a parent, I want to commend the parents that's been riding with them, and parents are inside the room, and I love that too, and thank the teachers who put themselves on the line, because sometimes they feel like they may be a bullseye on their back for saying things in regards to students, and also the administrators that are a part of this, so I just want to say that part. I want to pivot a little bit to make sure that this district understands that we have an issue in Camden about hiring our Camden residents. If you have not read the article with all the reports coming back for the people who have larger corporations that hire 25 or more employees full-time, we are the 1%, Subaru was hiring 1% of our residents, Holtech is hiring 1% of our residents, it's a very low number of residents being, being hired in Camden. If you haven't seen the reports, I will email them to you. This is not an attack on what Camden City can do, we're just talking about economic development, economic justice. Superintendent, you and I were hand in hand and arm in arm when Mr. Singh at Holtech was disrespectful to what we produce in this district. Holtech was disrespectful to what we produce in this district. And now it's time for us to make sure these people who got tax incentives and tax deductions, make sure they hire and train our students, so if they don't want to go to college, they got a career in the city. So what's important to say tonight is that when you see these students speak, they're speaking from a space that they need help, and this campus needs help. Though it is a beautiful building and has issues internally, and the only way we're going to do that is we open up the doors and let these children unite. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Dickerson. Next speaker is Kyrie Rembert.
I'm Kyrie Rembert. I stand in union with all the seniors across the campus. Good afternoon. Today I'll be sharing my thoughts on a matter that affects us all, the thought of a combined graduation. First, the hard work that we put into our studies and extracurricular activities should not be overlooked. Each of us has a youth story and journey, and we deserve to be acknowledged by the school we attend. Having a joint graduation undermines this individual recognition and could leave many feeling as though their hard work and dedication went unnoticed. We're the ones who spent countless hours preparing, practicing for our respective graduations, and now there's a talk about something we didn't even agree on. It's time-consuming and ridiculous for some of us. And many, in my opinion, having a combined graduation ceremony would be a disservice to us as students. Instead, we should celebrate our achievements individually, give everyone the recognition they deserve, and maintain the integrity of the school we worked so hard to graduate from. We can still come together as a campus for certain things, but not at the expense of taking away the experience of tradition and personal ceremony for the student across this campus. I urge the administration to reconsider their decision and listen to the voices of the student. We all worked hard to be here today, and it's important to recognize our unique achievements and their rightful place. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alani Burke.
Hello, okay. Good afternoon to the school board. My name is Alani Burke. I'm a senior drama major at Creative Arts High School. I stand in unity with all the seniors across the Camden High School campus that we are opposed to the merging of our 2023 graduation. And to the outside eye, a mass graduation doesn't sound that bad, but to me, someone who's been going to Creative Arts since sixth grade, graduation means a lot to me. I've seen countless alumni graduate, and this event is something I've been looking forward to my entire middle school and my high school life. I, as well as the other students at my school, have nothing against Creative Arts BPLA, I mean Camden High, Brem BPLA, but we recognize and appreciate that all of our schools have different cultures and different traditions. So why should we ignore that? Especially at graduation and to mush us together at some school, at the same school, at your convenience is inconsiderate, and goes to show how much you care about the students you work for. You literally gave us a poll and asked us what we wanted, and the people spoke, and you still decided to do what y'all wanted to do. This probably isn't the first time this has happened either. And for an example, at Duke University, they described their colleges as a collection of villages, and that's just like the Camden High School campus. According to that article, they say that they hold three ceremonies and five receptions in the days leading up to the Sunday commencement ceremony. And these decisions aren't sprung upon the students. They let them know days in advance. Last, and, oh, last year we had separate graduations, and we should have took notes from them so we can prove them, so we can prove better for this year. And a mass graduation leaves so many unnecessary questions up in air, like whose school song will be sung? How many valedictorians, salutatorians will they be? And will they be able to give a speech that they worked hard for the four years that they've been here? And I heard a brawl was breaking out if we had a merged graduation. What systems are being in place to prevent another fight from starting at this mass graduation? What are we doing as adults to ensure that my classmates can be individually honored in a safe environment? The students should be individually honored in a controlled, intimate, air-conditioned, safe environment. As a combined final statement from the seniors that spoke from the senior class, we represent, we want a definitive answer as soon as possible, no later than the next board meeting, April 25th. And when you get your answer, tell us in person in front of the entire senior class with our parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke. Next speaker is Trinity Wallace.
Good afternoon. My name is Trinity Wallace, and I'm a senior at Camden High School. I want to reiterate the points of my peers and faculty in standing against the merged graduation. I believe a merged ceremony would be unfair to students across the building. Each school has their own traditions for the ceremony, and I feel many will be sacrificed for convenience, not ours, but yours. Camden High especially has been marching to the field and singing our alma mater for years uninterrupted. Similarly to how the rest of the year has unfolded, Camden High will undoubtedly have to compromise for the sake of others. Nothing else on this campus is united. Our lunches are separate, our wings are separate, and our dismissals are separate. So there's no reason to start implementing combined events with our graduation. Graduation really is the least you can give us after not fulfilling our needs in the entire year. If you consider nothing else, take note of the fact that the entire campus's seniors have already voted against a joint graduation, and I would like to think that our voices matter enough to you to completely scrap the idea of a 2023 merged campus graduation.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Next speaker is Jalen Henry.
Hello. I am speaking on, I am a junior at Creative Arts High School, and I am speaking on behalf of Nancy Lopez. I would like to address Superintendent Katrina Combs, President Mohammed, and Vice President Nelson. Hello, my name is Nancy Lopez, a senior attending Creative Arts High School. I stand in unity with the seniors across the Camden High Campus and against the merging the graduation for the class of 2023. Merging graduations will take away from my own autonomy, my school's culture away from me, and it's a day for students and their families to celebrate such a huge accomplishment, a day that my peers have been working for all of their high school years. First, the students took a survey at the beginning of the school year, asking if they wanted a joint graduation, and the results were that they did not. This made it seem as if they had a choice. This decision clearly makes it seem as if they don't. CTSD always says they want to put students first, and it seems as if they aren't doing that in this case. Furthermore, the impact will not be impressive in building our school's future. We have our own accolades, sports, and overall identity. A joint graduation will take away from that. Lastly, students want to be able to do that by showing their uniqueness at their individual graduations, because this is something that they have been working for all of their high school years. We, the students, are the future of the world. Are we ignoring the voices of our future leaders? We collectively would like to answer whether or not we are merging graduations within two weeks or no later than the next school board meeting. And we would like to have the answer in person with the senior class, our parents, and our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Henry.
And this, I'm speaking on behalf of myself now.
Okay, you will still only have a total of three minutes, so I, Sheena, if you could reset the clock, I think there was about a minute and 20 left.
Oh, okay. I'm a junior at Creative Arts High School, and I stand in unity with the Drama and Instrumental Department, and I would like to address the constant problem the Creative Arts School has been faced, the kicking us out at 8:00 and the low funding of our activities. Crime statistics show that the highest risk for a teenager becoming a victim of a violent crime is the hours immediately following the end of the school day. Studies show, also show that teenagers are more likely to engage in risky behaviors, smoke, drink, or do drugs during these hours. Student studies also show that teens who do not participate in after-school activities are nearly three times more likely to skip class or use marijuana or other drugs. And they are also more likely to drink alcohol, smoke cigarettes, and engage in unsafe sexual activity. Now, to my point, is saying the kicking us out at 8:00. We, I am, we are a part, Creative Arts High School has a competitive jazz band, and in doing so, and competitive choir team. So kicking us out and making, and forcing us to be out at 8:00 when we are working hard to make sure we uplift this Camden name is, I feel like, is very unfair. I understand-
Thank you, Ms. Henry. That's the remainder of your time.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mahaj Jones.
How y'all doing? My name is Mahaj Jones. I'm a senior at Big Picture, and I stand with the rest of my seniors and my school for a non, like a non-combin' graduation. Me personally, it feel like us having a combined graduation is just suitable for y'all. A lot of us come to school and have to deal with adversities. A lot of us don't even want to be here due to outside situations. You get what I'm saying? So for us to have to come to school, work extra hard all four years to get the graduation, and then have to share it with another, with three other schools, to me, it's not fair. Already coming here, a lot of schools had to change their everyday activities. They already had to change what they do as a school, their traditions. So I feel like together, as a school, we, of course, we not going to agree to having a combined graduation. Prom is different. We all, some of us might have small schools, some of us might not have enough seniors. You get what I'm saying? So for us all to be together, that makes sense. But for graduation, a lot of us, it means something to us. To me personally, I just, like, within a senior year, I lost my big brother and my dad. You get what I'm saying? They won't be here to see me graduate. But there is people that will be here to see me graduate, and I want them to be able to share this space by themselves and enjoy the moment and be able to be happy for me. I know most seniors in here feel the same way. So I feel like me personally, things do need to change, and I feel like it ain't fair.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next speaker is Ruben Bell.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Ruben Bell, the president of QPSI. I'm inspired to be here by seeing these kids here. I was that kid 30 years ago. I'm not from this area, I'm from New Orleans, but I've been here now for about 25 years. And the purpose of me coming here is to share with you an event that we have this weekend. I'm a product of the public school system of New Orleans. I'm an engineer, and engineering has changed my life. And Mike Ricketts, the CEO of QPSI, has made an investment in this community, and what we want to do is partner with STEM NOLA. STEM NOLA is a premier science, technology, engineering, math company that puts on STEM events all across the country, including the world. I'm on the board for STEM NOLA. We have a program in Tanzania, Africa as well. And the purpose is, in Morgan Village this Saturday, 9 to 12, QPSI has sponsored STEM NOLA to come in and execute a STEM Camden Fest. And what we'll have is over 60 exhibitions for kids, kindergarten through 12th grade, to give them opportunity to touch, feel, and experience engineering for themselves, right? So this is about engagement, this is about inspiration, this is about empowering our youth and bringing access to them that they might not ever see, right? So I've become an engineer because someone took the time to invest in me, and as QPSI, we've made a commitment to invest money to do the same thing in this community, right? So the hope is that this becomes a long-term, sustainable event. We have some corporate partners that we want to partner with, but in order for us to do that, we need your help to try to get more kids registered. We have about 300 kids registered now, but we've paid for over 1,000. You don't have to be there for the whole three hours as a festival, so you come in, you come out. But, you know, growing up, my mom told me when we left the house, "Don't embarrass me, and don't touch nothing", right? This is an event that kids can touch everything in the room, right? So we want our kids to experience that, because we're making an investment in this community. So with your help, we're hopeful that you guys can help us register more kids and have a powerful event at Morgan Village this Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Next speaker is Natasha Plummer.
I'm sorry, y'all. Okay. Hi, my name is Natasha Plummer. I'm a senior dance major from Creative Arts, and I'm here today to speak on behalf of the student body and why we feel as though we should not have a combined graduation. Because each school has their own culture and traditions, and with having a joint graduation, we will not be able to show our hard work we have put in over the past four years through our traditions. Why combine us now? When you have all fault, your hardest to keep us divided throughout the school, from the colored blocks on our floors, the separate wings, the separate lunches, and when our key card allows us and does not allow us to enter for each side of the school, and even the staggered dismissal. Why give us the option to vote and go against what we voted for? Why try to give us a vote, a voice, then take it away? What do you think the example you're showing for the next class of 2024 of what they would do with? And also adding on to what their representative said, I'm not sure of her name, I don't know if she's still in here, but like she said, they had a classmate that passed away during COVID, and Creative Arts, we also have a classmate that passed away during COVID that we would like to honor. He would have been graduating with us. His name is David. So we want to be able to do that with our class, and yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Plummer. Next speaker is Ray Jones.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ray Jones. I'm the president of the Camden Business Association, and I'm here really just to echo what Ruben was saying about the STEM program that we're putting together. And by the way, the STEM program is free, right? So any child in here from K to 12, please, please come by. So as the president of the Business Association, I understand, you know, what's out there, what's coming in the future, like offshore wind, right? This is the kind of stuff that this program will teach our kids. And we're trying to get this program to be here all year round, not just a one-shot deal. The first one, we're calling it a festival, but we're going to understand what the kids want, and you'll be surprised when they show up. And we're inviting you guys, too. Y'all need to come so that you can see exactly what it is, because we truly, truly need your support. As Ruben said, he said it eloquently, but I might say it a little different. We got 350 kids signed up. We prepared for 1,000. We need you guys to put it out there to them, because this is, they're your constituents, right? They're your children, you're the board for them. I'm running out of time. But I really urge you guys to try to be there yourself. You know, this gives our kids options, right? You know, science, technology, engineering, and math. I'm sure there's some in here, and some of you that's sitting in here, listen, I understand your fight, I'm with you on that, but you need to try to come as well. It's for you, too. It's K through 12. You can learn some other stuff that might send your mind in another direction, something that you might not have heard already, alright? Again, they just need exposure. It's free. I'm just asking for your support. We can turn this into an all-year project, and we really want Camden to become the model for all the rest of the urban cities in the country. If we have the funding, we got the backing, we just need your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Next speaker is Taiwana Kiaga.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to share some concerns I have. I'm a learning consultant on a child study team, and I have some concerns in regards to the special education department. The special education department need lead educators for special education teachers. Ms. Landy is one person running a department that once had four additional people. Special education teachers need supervisors that know special education laws and code. Supervisors who will advocate for the needs of students with IEPs. Supervisors who will hold teachers accountable to provide students with services in their IEPs. There needs to be professional development for staff in the special education department. Child study team members as well as the teachers. Professional development should be based on IEP writing, goal-setting, data collection, co-teaching models, and modifications. Our self-contained classrooms need curriculums. When it comes, the district is always saying students first. I think we should start saying, what should, would this be okay for our children? And if the answer is no, we need to do better. This building is not being properly cleaned. About two weeks ago, I sent an email about the conditions of this building. Floor's dirty, bathroom's dirty- dirty, bathroom's dirty. Our kids deserve better. They should not be in this building and is not being properly cleaned. What's chair, desks, I'm based out of Big Picture. Desks are being placed on the top of the, I'm sorry, chairs are being placed on top of the desks. What signs are being placed now, but the floors are dirty. They haven't been mopped. They haven't been swept. Stairwells, after I sent the email two weeks ago, I thought the condition would improve. I walked the stairwell today. It's dust. It haven't been swept. And I understand that the students needed to take care of the building, but did we teach them how to take care of this new building? We put them in it, but we didn't teach them how to take care of this building. We are failing a generation. When you walk around this building, you see students not in the classroom. They're hanging out in hallways, in stairwells, walking around with blankets and bonnets on their heads. I am a product of this, of Camden City. I graduated from Woodrow Wilson. I still reside in this city. And what I see when I walk around, it breaks my heart, because they don't understand the importance of being in the classroom, but we as adults do. And we have to do better with getting that message to them, because when they're in their thirties, then they're going to realize that they should have been in the classroom. It's going to be too late. So we have to do better by our students, and we're not doing that right now. We're failing them. One important thing, we need something in this building that, like an app or something, see something, say something. One, I want to say, maybe last month, there were students trying to get into Camden High's, I'm sorry, Big Picture and Brim's lunch. They were Camden High students. They were turned away. They were coming down the stairwell that leads to Big Picture, and I heard a student say, "There's someone outside the door. He wants me to let them in."
Thank you, Ms. Kiaga. That is your time.
Can I just finish this point, please?
I'm sorry. I can't let you finish your point, but you can submit anything you are not able to say in writing to the board.
After I told them not to.
Thank you, Ms. Kiaga.
And I put in our group me app for Big Picture.
Ms. Kiaga, anything additional you would like to say? I encourage you to put in writing an email to the board. Ms. Kiaga, I'm going to call the next speaker.
Thank you, ma'am. If you can, if you would like to stay to get a sidebar with us, if you can want to finish, we want to hear what you have to say. But out of respect to others that are here, we would like to hear you. But if you would like to have a sidebar at the end, we'll all be here. Thank you.
The next speaker is Damon Nichols.
First, I'd like to say, congratulations to the original Eastside High School, goes to Patterson, New Jersey, winning a Group Four state championship, wearing black and orange resembling another team. Good way to cause a double standard and confusion. But anyway, I'm here to talk about the tearing down of the Woodrow Wilson Building and the student population decline. Y'all do know the Woodrow Wilson Building was built during the Great Depression and opened during the Great Depression. It's the only monument on display from that time here in Camden. It seems like y'all don't have no respect or regards to any history in this city. Majority of y'all are from here, just like me. It seem like the mission is to seek and destroy. That's the number one mission, seek and destroy everything. But as far as student population at Eastside High School, y'all know why the student population is declining. You could be naive. You could be in denial and stubborn all you want to. The facts and reality is no escaping it. The 2019-20 school year, before any mention of a name change, it was eight hundred and seventeen students at Woodrow Wilson High School. The school maintained a population of eight hundred to a thousand students at a standstill for like twenty years before any mention of a name change. Y'all been running the school raggedy for years. No money that you have now. Some past graduation classes didn't get to experience any upgrades or luxury touch-ups to the school. Majority of students still wanted to be at Woodrow Wilson High School before any other school here in Camden. You got two categories. You got Woodrow Wilson faithful that left, and some people just don't want no jailhouse-looking junk on their diplomas. Nobody wants to look like they graduated from the east side section of a jailhouse, especially when they don't bear a reflection of the city or a piece of grass in the city. Understand why the population is declining right now. We're in a time where everything normal is abnormal, and everything is abnormal is the new normal. This ain't Patterson, 1926, when he built their school. This ain't 1986, when he had Joe Clark. This ain't the Jeffersons moving on up to the east side. Eastside resembles gangs and prisons. You can't sprinkle sugar on trash and expect everybody to say, "This the best we can do." You can't sprinkle sugar on trash and just shove it down everybody's throat. Y'all settle for anything the public has except anything. Y'all took our school, put it in a rabbit hole, and dumped on it, literally turning it into a Rutgers Camden, Camden on a high school level. A school name sounding like Eastside, where's the positive influence in that? Where's the bright future?
Thank you, Mr. Nichols.
How can you hold yourself to a higher standard? The school name resemble a state prison.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Next speaker is Ziyaria Griffith.
Hello. My name's Ziyaria Griffith, and I'm a senior at Brim Medical Arts High School. I stand in union with all the seniors across the campus against the merge of our graduation. While the four schools are physically located in the same building, there are each individual and separate schools. Each school has its own student body administration and support staff. A merged graduation would blur the lines between these schools and diminish their individuality. It would also cause logistical difficulties with four sets of families' supporters vying for seats for a single graduation, creating an atmosphere of confusion and frustration. Students should not be inconvenienced for someone else's convenience. While a merged graduation could potentially save time and money, it would not be worth sacrificing the unique culture experience of each school. On top of all of this, I'd like you all to really think about this. As a campus, our dismissal was changed, and instead of collectively leaving altogether, we're sporadically dismissed between three o'clock and three twenty for the safety of the students because of ongoing fights. If you won't dismiss us together, why make us graduate together? Graduation is a once-in-a-lifetime event that should be celebrated in a way that is meaningful and special to each student, not in a generic one-size-fits-all. Too much would be lost in terms of tradition, individuality, and convenience for these ceremonies to be merged together. Graduation is a time to celebrate the accomplishments of each individual school and to honor the hard work that each student put in to get to this point. This is our graduation. We should have that choice to have the graduation we want and deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Griffith. Next speaker is Jordan Conte. Conte?
Hello. My name is Jordan Conte. I'm a twelfth-grade senior vocalist at Creative Arts High School, and I'm here to fight against the graduation being merged. I was sitting here and I'm listening, and I'm realizing, like, even just now, names are being messed up, and you don't know the students' names, but want to make decisions for them, which I feel is highly not a good thing. Like, my principal is behind me right here, and she knows her senior's name. So if she was going to make a decision, I wouldn't be so as opposed to it, because she understands her students. Now, yes, there was, when we voted against this, and even then, it's still not being listened to. And there's so much that goes on, and it's not being heard. Like, yes, I'm a vocal major, and then there are other band majors in here, and we can, we have a lot of the same struggles. The bandroom and the vocal room are right next to each other. I just got out of a rehearsal, and I'm fighting to listen to the music that I need to sing, because, and it's not their fault, because the band is loud, and they need to play what they need to play, and they're fighting to hear what they need to hear over our singing. And it's a constant clash. We're a performing arts school. We take, we take pride in our academics. We take pride in our performing and arts. The dance room is upstairs. I have to listen to music being played loud while they dance, while I'm trying to learn. I have French class, and I need to listen to my teacher say words I don't, I've never heard before, while the strings majors are playing their violins and guitars. Why do I have to fight to go to school? I'm literally fighting in class to listen to my teacher over music, when at the other school, it was perfectly fine. We had our sections. We had our wings. And I just feel like it was also brought up when we had the chance to talk about the building. How do we want it to be? Do we want our, our vocal rooms and our band rooms to be the way that they are now? And it was told that we would like soundproof rooms, and some things cannot be given because, you know, cost of money, but there are other ways to get around it. I still feel as though rooms such as the vocal room should be in their own section, whereas not to mess with other people trying to learn, such as the band room, the strings room, the dance rooms, even the black box being upstairs where shows are going on and classes are going on. I think that's not a very good way to run a performing arts school. We are very unique and different, which also ties into our graduation. We are a performing arts school, and we don't do things the way that other schools do. Our graduation is so much different from others. I watched the one last year, and we had dancers from the senior class dancing. We had singers from the senior class singing in their capping gown, and they had their own time to be recognized. I know me personally, I won't be the valedictorian, but that doesn't mean that I won't walk across that stage and be remembered for something besides a speech. I'll get my own recognition through my own graduation, but if it's merged with everyone else's, I'll just be another name walking across this stage, and no one will know what I'm doing. So I would like y'all to listen more to the students and what they ask for, because this is your, your future and our future, and we need to respect our future, because that's ultimately what's the most important thing.
Thank you, Mr. Conte. The final in-person speaker this evening is Geneva Pitts.
Hello. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
How you guys doing?
Thank you.
Peace and blessings to you guys. First and foremost, I don't, I didn't come with a speech prepared. I'm speaking straight from the heart. I'm speaking in regards to the graduation. I have a student, a child. She's at Camden Big Picture Learned Academy. She's a senior. She has overcome a lot of adversity, personal adversities, to get to this point, to graduate. And I feel as though that each school has their own individual accolades and awards and things that they would want to present to the students, and they deserve that. It's unfair for anyone to make a decision that involves students and the parents or whoever supported them as far as the graduation is concerned. Why would you guys want to steal that joy from the students? Each and every one of you, including myself, had our own graduation, and we would have been very upset if they wanted to combine a graduation with any other school, whether we were in the same school or not. They all have their own individual colors. They all have their own individual valedictorian, sports awards. Everything is individual. So why would you guys want to combine something like that if they're separated in every other aspect? So to combine it because, to make it more convenient, because you don't want to, or people don't want to attend two and three and four and five graduations during the day, that's what you signed up for when you took the job. And to take that away from the students, the staff, and they voted on this. What was the point of them having a vote if you guys weren't going to stand on what you said? What, that would make them not even want to vote in, in real life. That would make them think about voting in real life. If in high school, they voted, they came, you guys asked them, they didn't want to have prom together, but they agreed to do that so that they could have graduation separately. And now, if, if you guys agreed, and maybe you didn't make the decision yet, maybe it's still in the air, you just wanted to throw it out there to see, you know, the reaction that you would get from it, but obviously, no one is in agreeance with that. You know, it's, it's a convenience for you guys, because I guess that, you know, you know, you guys want to have a, you know, you don't want to take all the time that it may take to do a graduation, but that's unfair to the people who worked. All these seniors have worked for four years. And let's remember, they went through COVID, okay? And so you, we didn't do that. We didn't have to go sit on those screens. Somehow, it was very hard for them to do that. They went through depression. They went through a lot of things with, with COVID, and they deserved this. They earned it, and they should have it. My daughter, I have two seconds left, and since I'm the last one, I'm going to finish. Y'all can cut my mic off.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts. Sorry.
My daughter has rheumatoid arthritis, right? No, no, no. She has rheumatoid arthritis, and she earned her graduation. She should be able to walk.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts. Thank you, Ms. Pitts. We do have three written submissions this evening. The first one is Carla Viegas. Her comment is, "Good evening, board members. My name is Carla Viegas. I am the outreach organizing manager for Parents Invincible. I'm here today to speak about the importance of having more security guards in the Camden High campus. The incident that happened on Tuesday, March seventh, two twenty, two thousand twenty-three outside of the school was scary. Even though it happened outside, we still need to bring in more security in case incidents like these occurred in the school. I know the school tries to do something by changing the dismissal time for each school, but I feel as though changing the time doesn't ensure children's safety, because students can wait until other schools get out to continue with these fights. I hope the CCSD can come up with a resolution for these ongoing issues." Thank you. Next comment is from Dewan Truitt. "My name is Dewan Truitt, and I feel as though my child is not being challenged enough in her second grade class. My peers, children in different districts are learning more advanced things than she is. I believe in the public school system, because that's what I grew up in, but I understand why people put their children in private schools, and that is not something I want to do, but if, but I will if necessary for my child's educational success." Thank you, Ms. Truitt. Last comment is from Ms. M. Cutler. "Dear Superintendent McCombs and Board of Education members, the NJEA, in concert with Camden City Schools, has received over five thousand books from Bridge of Books, a nonprofit organization. The four consultants working in Camden for NJEA contacted and collaborated with the schools to bring these books from a warehouse in Atlantic Highlands. They were distributed to all students in the schools to add in their, to their home libraries. This year, the schools that received the books were Forest Hill, RT Cream School, as well as Cooper's Point. The students were very appreciative of the books. The distribution of these books is another way that our district continues to support the importance of love and reading. Thank you for your support of NJEA, as they are our partners to close the reading gap." Thank you, Ms. Cutler. Superintendent, that concludes public comment for this evening. I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you so much. Thank you to our general counsel. Thank you to our board, but most importantly, thank you to our participants who have been engaged in our board meeting this evening. Thank you for, to our students. Let's all give our students a round of applause for sharing their voices, for sharing their concerns, for doing so in such an eloquent manner, and also a very persuasive manner. So thank you so much. You've done, and I mean that. I'm not even being facetious. You have our attention. You had my attention. You had our attention collectively, and you did an outstanding job, outstanding job. And so that's something we want to see you continue to do in many different forums. So first, I want to say thank you again. Everything that you expressed tonight was listened to, was heard, even the parents who came in, who shared, the teachers who came in and shared as well, advocates from the community who came to share. This is very important for us to hear. As it was already shared, I did not, as superintendent, send any information out with regard to a decision for graduation for the upcoming year. However, that doesn't matter. What is most important is that you expressed your concerns and your voices tonight. That is what's most important. And so what I want to say is that, moving forward, we will take every thought that was shared into consideration and under advisement as we make plans for June's graduation. We will definitely continue this dialogue and will keep everyone abreast as to what that decision is. However, I want to just make sure I underscore again, and I did send out a quick text, because I wanted to get some key information. First, when the, and you don't have to answer now, because I know the students are going to let me know, when the surveys were distributed, because they were distributed here at the school level, not at the district level, when they were distributed, and also who distributed them, so that I could find out and get that information. I wasn't, I wasn't made aware of the results of the survey until after, long after, like maybe a couple weeks ago. However, I do want to have a better understanding of what those numbers look like and what that information was. But what is most important is that you shared your thoughts, and that you shared your voices, and that you are empowered to do so, and that you are leaders. So we will definitely share in a timely manner, as you requested, what the decision is, so that everyone- the decision is so that everyone can prepare. And we look forward to celebrating all of our graduates in the Camden City School District this June. Thank you so much for your time and attention. The next comment I'd like to acknowledge is from Mr. Gary Frazier. Thank you for being here this evening.
What?
Oh, thank you. Asking is shall be given. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, and I will have a chance to take a look at this information. Thank you very much. Mr. Frazier, I'm not sure if you're still here in the room, but want to thank you. Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Frazier. I want to thank you and collectively say a thank you. You are welcome, and we will continue to be here and work with you. You are right, and we will continue to focus on mental health for all of our students and all of our staff and adults, and we will try to continue to do our part towards the advancement of equity and inclusion in all learning spaces as we have influence over inside and outside of Camden. So again, it is this collective work, collective dialogue. All voices don't have to be the same. If they are, then it's a very poor system, but we want to hear all voices, dissenting voices, agreeing voices, because they help us to make decisions. And the voice that you shared, Mr. Frazier, is also helping us to be able to continue to improve our supports in the area of mental health. Thank you, Ms. Dickerson, for your dual pieces tonight in addressing the crowd and addressing the board and addressing myself. With regard to the graduation, I've spoken on that. Thank you so much for your example, for sharing.
Absolutely.
For sharing and for being a role model to our young people on the importance of expressing themselves. So thank you so much for guiding them through. Second piece of what you shared is, I agree with you. We are working with our external partners to support opportunities such as job shadowing, internships, and subsequent hiring of our Camden graduates. Specifically, we are embedding these opportunities within our CTE programs of study, of which we now have 13 approved programs by the Department of Education. And additionally, beyond these formal programs of study, we are working with companies, some of those that you mentioned and called out specifically, especially those in Camden, to ensure careers and job opportunities for our young people. It is so very important, and that's been one of the things that we have been working toward, that we ensure that we're preparing our young people to wherever they choose to go, to gain employment, but they should have first dibs right here in their city. So that is something that we are working on actively, and we will continue to update the board and the community on the progress there. With regard to, there was a comment from one of our students from Creative Arts, Ms. Henry. Thank you for bringing the closing of the building time. Yes, the eight o'clock closure of the building time to our attention. Your ports are well taken. We will take them under advisement. We do know that we will have to, of course, we have to make sure we send our young people home in a timely manner. The extension, I, look, it wouldn't matter to me if they were in school all day and all night, but we do know we have to close the building down, get ready for the next building, make sure that our students get home safely. But what you shared is taken to heart, and we will take a look at that information and see if there are other solutions that we can provide that would be able to support the needs of our young people during the after-school hours. We are just so grateful that you want to be here. We're so grateful that you want to be in our schools. We are so grateful that you want to stay and perform and continue to be a shining light for not only the school but for the community. So we want to figure out some creative solutions in that area. With regard to the STEM Nova program, thank you, Mr. Jones and Mr. Smith, for sharing. We actually, excuse me. Yep, my minutes are up. I like that. We actually, we want to thank you. We have been sharing about the STEM Nova program that is coming up. I will be there. I'm looking forward to it. Our Senior Director of Communications, Mashina Yera, is in the back booth, and she also has been sharing that event on social media. We have been sending robocalls, flyers, home and backpacks, and we will continue to do so because we do think it's a great opportunity for our community to come together, our young people to engage in hands-on STEM activities. And so we're looking forward to hosting that in one of our Camden City School District schools, right at Morgan Village, and we will keep pushing as this is the ramp-up week to that program. With regard to teacher sharing about the uncleanliness of the building, special education and culture, thank you to Ms. Kayaga. I'm not sure if she's still here on the other side. Kiaga, is she over? Oh, okay, on the other side. I can't see because I don't have my glasses on. If I put them on, I won't be able to read this, so my apologies. Thank you so much. So thank you for sharing what you see here in the school. You shared it with passion. You shared it with your whole heart. I know you love our students, and you just didn't start loving them at this board meeting tonight. You show it each and every day. So we will confirm our procedures for cleaning the buildings. We will confirm those in follow-up and hold accountable as necessary to ensure that more is done, to ensure that our staff and students feel valued in their spaces. Regarding special education, we do have professional development that is planned, and we'll continue to review and add on to our professional development calendar to meet the needs of all staff. With regard to special education, we have been looking very closely, and I have been, we have actually had a consultant that has come on board, who has provided many recommendations for how we can restructure our special education program, not our program, our department, and our program offerings, so that we do become more effective and efficient in meeting the needs of our students. So more to come. Some of the things that you shared are actually already in the recommendations that we're going to move toward. So you're right on point. We thank you, and I would not have a problem with having a sidebar conversation with you, as a board president stated as well afterwards, because I know you didn't have enough time to share all that you needed to. So again, thank you for your commitment to our young people. There, the other items that were shared, again, I tried to address the general themes, but I want to make sure that I end on the note of saying that, again, this is collective engagement, dialogue, hearing differing voices, not the same voices, working together to ensure that we arrive at the best decisions for our young people is so important. I know I'm not only speaking on behalf of myself, but I'm sure that it's shared. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board. That's the board president's job, but I know that's a shared desire, that we're able to make sure that we hear differing voices and make sense of all of that and do better and move forward and do better for our young people. So we will continue to strive to put our students first, and we know that everyone is so very important to ensuring that that happens. That is the end of my responses to the public comment portion. At this time, I will open it up to the board. I'll turn it over to our board president to see if there are any responses or questions from the board.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. At this time, if there's any board members who would like to comment about anything that was said during the public portion of our Vice President Nelson?
Thank you, Board President. Did you have some superintendent?
Sure.
My apologies. There were a few issues that I don't want to, I want to make sure I don't gloss over. Ms. Viegas had a concern about school safety, and that is so critically important. We see what's happening in our world today, so I wanted to make sure that I responded to her question. So currently, there are 20 school safety officers deployed, 25, I'm sorry, 25, if I'm correct, 25. Is it 25 or 20? 20, my apologies. 20 school safety officers deployed across the Camden High campus. The district continues to recruit qualified individuals who will be qualified and capable of serving our students as school safety officers. We are also collaborating with our partners in the Camden County Metro Police Department to share information between both entities as we attempt to be proactive in mitigating any situations or preventing them before they arise. We currently have six new staff in the onboarding process, so that's where I'm getting that extra six number from. Camden Metro supports the district by having officers during drop-off and at dismissal. As a district, we continue to make the necessary adjustments as the situation changes. With regard to rigor from Ms. Truitt, the Camden City School District curriculum is aligned to the New Jersey School Learning Standards in all content areas and challenges our students through the multiple programs provided to support instruction. These programs are engaging, inquiry-based, standards-aligned, and provide multiple opportunities for interactive and hands-on, engaging instruction. However, we know that we continue to provide professional development to our teachers to ensure that we are delivering the lessons in rigorous ways, engaging ways, and ways that are differentiated for the multiple needs of our young people. And just to thank you for the book donation. We are very appreciative to the Bridge of Books organization for the donation for books to students at Forest Hill, Cream School, and Cooper's Point. Home libraries are so important, and we thank you. So we definitely, as a district, want to publicly say thank you for helping us to advance the love of literacy. And I turn it back over to you. Thank you for that space.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent. Vice President Nelson?
Thank you, Board Pres. I just wanted to say thank you to our students, just reiterating coming together, expressing yourself. Your voices are important. Thank you to our parents. Thank you to our staff. Sometimes you may not always hear a board member speak, but I just want you to know that we're working hard every day. We have a lot of conversations before board meetings, after board meetings, so our conversations don't stop. You know, parents, guardians, you know, a lot of things. You don't have to convince us. The conversations are already taking place, you know, and we just want to know, like, you know, we are representatives of you. You know, we are a voice for you. You don't have to wait, you know, just to board meetings to share things. There's a lot of people that reach out and share concerns, and, you know, those people know what's addressed because those things come back to those members. So I just encourage people to continue to speak up. Know just because you may not hear us say something here is not because we don't want to speak up about it. It's because either, A, we've already spoken up about it, or it's either a follow-up conversation. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Nelson. Anybody? Board Member Gonzalez?
I want to thank all the students and recognize them for coming out tonight and advocating not just for themselves but for their schools as they are representations of themselves, their teachers, their school, and it's commendable. To, I guess, to advocate on what they were advocating for, just you want them to know that there were no conversations amongst us about ever emerging graduations, and, you know, that's something that was unknown to, you know, at least to some. I speak for myself as a board member, and I know that in hopes that, especially with what happened tonight, that you, you know, make the right decisions to ensure that their voices are heard and we accept that, you know, what they requested. I want to, and it's sad, and it's sad that I have to recognize this, and it's something that should, could be applauded, but it shouldn't be. We have had so many tragical incidents in this nation regarding school safety and how kids feel going to school. And without bringing up specific incidents, I'm pretty sure that many of you guys can refer, understand what I'm referring to, especially what just happened this week in Nashville. And it's, we can applaud the fact that we feel comfortable enough to know that here in this city, here in this district, and us as board members and the administration work hard to ensure that those things don't happen here. Why? Because we have the aunts and the uncles that will ensure that incidents like the ones in Uvalde, incidents like the one that happened in Nashville, don't occur here. And that's why they have not occurred, and that's why we hope that we never have to face that, not just our kids but our community. And we applaud the security officers, Ms. Fooks, Watkins, Frost, for doing the job, because not only do they work here, and they've been here for years, but they are that aunt and uncle out in the community. If they had to knock some sense into somebody, they would. And we have to recognize that. But I want the kids to know that, as a district, we are, as Vice President said, we are always talking about the safety of our kids and our students, and we want you to feel secured coming to school and knowing that the disgusting incidents that have happened throughout our nation will not happen here. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Gonzalez. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Board Member Martinez?
I'm not going to repeat what our board members already mentioned about our students. Camden, our future looks bright with all the student representation that we had today. My comment is just based on a request. The request would be, as we look into hiring security, just make sure, I'm hoping that we can hire Camden first as we go through the process. I know that we're looking for Camden residents to be in our schools because they're part of our community. So just as a request, I'm not saying it's not being done, just put it out there that we hire Camden first.
Thank you much, Board Member Gonzalez. Anyone else? Board Member Jackson?
I just wanted to take a second to thank our students, our community members, the family of the students, parents, grandmothers, aunts, uncles, our leaders in the community. I see a lot of you out here too who came and rallied together to speak on behalf of our students. I think it was beautiful that we came together for something outside of sports. I think that this is, and that's not, and I'm not even trying to be funny, but I think that it's a beautiful thing that we can come together and that the kids can come together. I thank Ms. Wallace, who was the only Camden High speaker today, but she did so eloquently and articulately, and we understood everything that she was saying. Yes, Trinity, I'm talking about you. I was going to say she came out and said everything that needed to be said, and she spoke on behalf of her school as well. So I think that should be commended. We saw a lot of representation from other sites, but I thank you for being the only Camden High student here to speak for your students and for yourself tonight. Everyone, wonderful. I think that this was excellent. I think we definitely heard your points. We definitely feel where you're coming from. We understand your passion. We are from Camden City, so I'm a Creative Arts alumni, so I definitely hear what you all are saying about your individuality and be able to express how you want to be creative. Listen, the art of learning, learning through the arts, we know what that is. So I get that. I appreciate you all. I stand with you all and hope that we can come and make some bigger and better changes for our students and for ourselves moving forward. Thank you, guys.
Thank you much, Board Member Jackson. Anyone else have a comment? Well, thank you. I'll be brief because we share many of the sentiments of the board here, and I just want to say that, you know, I think Board Member Nelson said it best, Vice President Nelson, pardon me, said it best, that we are thankful for your concerns that you brought to us. This was not something that we were mainly made aware of and ahead of time. And when I reached over and asked, Madam Superintendent, it's something that, you know, you guys and your voices kind of may have preempted the strike, but they were heard this evening. And I want you to continue to advocate for, you know, what you feel is right, and we hear you. Just because we don't speak out a lot, because up here it's called Robert's Rules, and we have Robert's Rules that we have to attend by being a board. So just because you don't hear us speak, that it don't mean that we're not speaking behind closed doors and things that they do every day. I'm here to advocate for these young men and women who you see, and I'm the spokesperson for the board, that the work that they do, not only on this, standing here on this evening, but the work that many of them do in the community every day and making themselves accessible to the community, not only for you as students but parents, and meetings that we sit in and things, and hearings that we hear things, that we just sit and talk. So it's just because we're standing here and listening, that's what the Robert Rules meeting is all about. And what we do is not necessarily upfront, that you can see of some things we do. And in closing, I don't want to make this longer than what it is. As I listened to many of you, you know, I said, so where's this coming from? I just want to make sure that you are aware that your voices are not only strong and powerful, powerful, but your voices have to be kept where as though you, when you're given information, make sure we always check to who, what, where, when, and why before we express ourselves, because I can give it to you like this and I'm going to close. You know, we have come up in a time where the name Negro, this is school, it means that it's a part of a mill or a system that they use in the mill that is neutral, meaning that it has no use unless somebody else uses it. We were disproportionately given that name as Negro because we didn't have our voices, we didn't have many things, so when we had a voice, there's always an outside group or outside entities that's willing to use your voice. So as you use your voice, understand the playing field where you're at. Make sure that your voice is being heard rightfully and not being used by others because we are neutral. So I just want to share that with you all. You might not hear other people say that, but if I have your attention as young people, I want you to check all of the playing field, who's on first, second, third, and fourth, and understand that your voice that is powerful is not being used from others' agendas that may not be the right agenda. But we heard you loud and clear, and if I was personally thinking about anything, if I heard that about separate ones, you kind of swayed my opinion if I did hear it. So thank you.
At this time, I'll turn it over to our Board Secretary. We're going to go into committee reports at this time. Forgive us, we are, we've adjusted our agenda, so it's a little bit out of order, but we're going to make sure all of the business is attended to.
Thank you, Superintendent. As a result of various scheduling issues that's mattered this month and the rescheduling of the board meeting itself, we have just one committee reporting out this evening, and that's the Policy and Governance Committee, and reporting out on behalf of that committee is Board Member Cameron Hudson.
Good evening, everyone. This is Cameron Hudson, spokesperson for the Policy and Governance Committee. We met on March 21st. The board members that attended was Board Member Jackson, myself, and the chair of the committee is Board President Mohammed. It also was attended by Sam Price and Brian Gregg. We talked about board trainings that were coming up in May, one that just passed last week, as well as some new policy and policy revisions. We had for first reading, Policy 9112, or Student Representative to the Board of Education, a revision of Policy 1120 regarding board meetings, repeal regulation of Policy 1120, board meetings and public participation, and new Policy 1121 regarding public participation at board meetings to replace the repeal regulation. And the Policy, the Policy and Governance Committee is recommending to move forward to the first reading, to move forward with the first reading with all two policies, 9112 and 1121, policy revision to 1120, and repeal of regulation 1120, and also to conduct an audit of all of our student engagement groups, student council, student government, and student roundtables, and create a unified system for student-led groups with training. Do you want to go onto the blurbs? All right, that'll be it. Thank you.
Does he have a committee?
That concludes our committee reports for this evening. At this time, I'll turn it back to the superintendent for our superintendent's presentation.
Thank you, Board Secretary. We can transition down. We will have a curtailed presentation. The bulk of our presentation this evening is our budget hearing. So I will, we will transition down, and I will have an abbreviated superintendent's report, and it will be shared on our website if you want to see fuller details. Thank you so much.
All right. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for our March Advisory Board Meeting. I want to take this opportunity to pause at the beginning of our meeting. We can advance, yes, to the next slide. It's been spoken about already by several of our board members, but we want to pause because we are a part of the educational community in our nation, and as we start this evening's Advisory Board Meeting, unfortunately, once again, another community and our nation is suffering through another tragic school shooting. Our deepest sympathies lie with the entire Covenant School community in Tennessee, and, you know, we are devastated, they are devastated, and we all are collectively by the loss of three students and three staff members. But in addition, on the next slide, unfortunately, in a senseless act of violence, Dejawn Spalding, also known as Day Day, was a class of 2020 Camden High School graduate. He passed away. Every loss of life touches each of us, and we would like to share our deepest sympathies with Dejawn and his friends and his family. I can't see that. And additionally, as many of you already know and has been spoken about, but this is the first board meeting since his passing, Mr. Larry Blake, who I esteem very highly. Mr. Blake was an instrument of peace, but he was also someone who stood for the rights of the teaching staff and the support staff that he also represented. Mr. Blake passed away on March 14th. He taught middle school and elementary school students in the Camden City School District for more than two decades and specialized in social studies and math over the last few years. He also focused on mentorship and community service and rose to become the first Vice President of the Camden Education Association and three-term member of the Winslow Township Board of Education. We would like to take this time to publicly thank Mr. Blake for his commitment to Camden City schools, to the students, families, and to the staff. Mr. Blake was an awesome example of how to build a culture for all who are committed to the work of education and leaving this world better than you found it. Please join me in a moment of silence collectively as we express our condolences, not only to Mr. Blake's family, but Mr. Spalding's family and the Covenant School community. A moment of silence, please. So as we move forward in our agenda, as I shared, our presentation will focus on our upcoming school year budget. And so our main topic of conversation is the annual budget presentation. I will turn the meeting over to our business administrator, Mr. Raymond Cox, to walk us through that very important presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen. As the superintendent mentioned, this evening is our annual presentation of our annual audit report as well as the upcoming school year budget for the 2324 school year. So if you'll go to the next slide, please, Sheena. As with everything across the district, one of our guiding principles that guides all of our decision-making and direction that we want to go in is our overall district vision, you know, supporting the students and ensuring that they know they are valued, accepted, and prepared to positively impact their community as well as the world. So if you'll go to the next slide, please. First up, we're going to look at our FY22 audit report, the audit, for the fiscal year which ended June 30th of 2022. I'm very happy to say this evening that the school year ended on a very positive note in terms, in terms of fiscal standing. The district ended the FY22 year, fiscal year, with five audit findings. There were four audit findings that carried over from the prior fiscal year, which ended June 30th, 2021, and one new audit finding. One of the positives and highlights of this area was that we initially received six audit findings from our auditors, but were able to appeal and successfully appeal that audit, one of the audit findings to have that reduced down to five. A few years back in 2000, I believe it was the 2020 fiscal year, the district had a negative fund balance, meaning that the district had over-expensed the funds that were available to it. Over the past two years, FY21 as well as FY22, we've been able to turn that around and generate a positive fund balance. We ended FY21 with a positive $8 million fund balance and ended June 30th, 2022 with a positive $41 million fund balance. So where does that money go? Well, you'll see underneath that on the slide where those monies are directed. Some of those dollars were redirected to sell payoff bills that were extended over past June 30th, which were prior year encumbrances, as you'll see. Therefore, goods or services that were not fully completed as of June 30th, 2022. In this current year's budget, the 2022-2023 budget, we included $14 million to support and to offset that budget and support that budget. We've been able to create a capital reserve account to address the number of the capital projects and the overall upkeep of our facilities that are aging, and been able to put in $4.3 million into that capital reserve account. Additionally, we were able to enhance our maintenance reserve at $7.5 million. This will enable us to address a lot of the preventive maintenance areas that have been kind of passed over, if you will, over the past number of years as a result of the dire fiscal situation that the district was experiencing. We also have an emergency reserve account to offset any increases such as health benefit increases or tuition increases for our out-of-district students. And one of the highlights that the district is very proud of is that both of our auditors, our lead auditor as well as the partner with Bowman, have expressed the positive direction the district is going in terms of fiscal standing, that this is the second year in a row that the district had a clean and unmodified audit, where all of the reports that were requested by the auditors were able to be provided as well as easily reviewed and tested for the audit, as part of the audit process. Next slide, please. This slide just kind of gives a historical analysis of where things stood in terms of findings. Back, as you'll see, in FY 2017, as of June 30th, 2017, district had a peak of 27 audit recommendations. We're now down to five. So we've come a long way from where we were back in 2017, and we continue to make progress in our overall internal processes to improve and get down to zero, which we hope to be as of June 30th, 2023. Next slide. So this slide is rather small, but this slide reflects the corrective action plan, which the board will be approving this evening. The corrective action plan addresses those five areas of audit findings and outlines for the public as well as the auditors, the steps that the district will be taking to address those findings that have them cleared as of June 30th, 2023. Next slide. You can go to the next two slides, please, Sheena. So next up, we're going to be looking at our budget presentation for 2023-24, the FY24 fiscal year. When we look at our overall budget process, we look at, you know, what is needed for instruction, as that's our main priority as a school district. We look at our grant funds, our federal grants, mainly our ESR funds, our ARP ESR funds. We were fortunate as a district to have an increase in state aid this year, which we were very happy about, pleased about. As you'll see in the next slide, it's where we first started off, if we were to fully fund all the bells and whistles that everybody was requesting. And then we look at our payments that go out specifically for our out-of-district tuitions as well as our tuition payments that we make for our Renaissance and charter school partners. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is it. So one of the guiding principles that kind of steers us in preparing the budget is our overall enrollment projections. Currently, we're projecting a citywide total enrollment of just over 15,600 students, with 5,800 attending city district schools, 6,500 attending Renaissance schools, and approximately 3,200 attending charter schools. And the graph next to that kind of gives a comparison, a year-over-year comparison of those enrollments was we currently have as well as what we're projecting. Next slide, please. So one of our key components was obviously to present a balanced budget for the, to the DOE for review, and for the second time in a row, we've been, you know, fortunate enough to be able to do that. One of the things that, as I mentioned, if we were to fully fund all the requests that were submitted and give everybody what they were requesting, give everybody what they would want, which I know myself and the superintendent and the board would love to do, we were still facing a kind of a shortfall of budgeting in about $36 million. So that's where we had to begin looking at, you know, how do we balance things? How do we look at things to be able to meet the needs of the students, meet the needs of the staff, while also working within our projected revenues? So what we did, as I mentioned, to support the 2023, 2223 budget, we budgeted $14 million from our fund balance. For next year, we're budgeting $22 million from our fund balance. This is an area that we're being very mindful of, especially as we go into subsequent school years down the line, to make sure that we're operating within reasonable limits to be able to make sure that we make up that monies and be able to have funds available for future use as well. We're also drawing out $3.4 million from our maintenance reserve to handle a number of the required maintenance areas across the district. Some of the key areas and key components of this budget include the expansion of our district bus fleet. We're looking to add seven more buses to our district bus fleet, bringing our total to 12 for next year. Looking at capital improvements to our facilities across the district, not only will be using our ARP ESR funds to address a number of those areas, but we'll also be working with our capital reserve account to address a number of those areas of those non-priority schools that we have identified through our, the ARP grant program. Continuation of our co-teachers as well as continuation of professional development for our staff. So what does the budget look like? If you'll go to the next slide, please. Overall, this kind, this budget gives a snapshot of what our, our projected revenues are looking like for next year, for 2324. With our local funds mostly being our, our tax levy of $14 million, our budget of fund balance, as I mentioned, is $22 million. Our state aid, $335 million. This is an increase of close to $21 million on our state aid as well as our withdrawal from our maintenance reserve. So our projected revenues for our overall general operating budget are $376 million. Next slide, please. One of the things that the board, the superintendent, myself, and the entire administration is very mindful of is that we don't want to overburden our residents. We understand that there's a number of, where businesses are moving into town and whatnot that to help offset some of the tax valuation across the city, but there's still a heavy burden placed on the residents. So once again, we're proposing a budget that is still under the tax levy cap. Our FY24 budget is proposed to be close to $16 million under our tax levy cap, with a tax, proposed tax levy of $14 million. So as you could see, if we were to fully fund, to have the residents fully fund this budget, the cost to the residents spread out to be, on the equalized valuation, will be just over $30 million. Next slide, please. This table here charts out and graphs out the overall increases and where the state dollars are coming from, the various categorical grants that the district is receiving from the, from the state. Our equalization aid saw the biggest increase of $20.8 million to help support the FY24 Next slide, please. So where is that money going? As you can see here, the largest portion in green is going to our Renaissance schools, as we'll discuss in a bit, and then we have our instruction, our undistributed costs, which are, is our technology, our transportation, our out-of-district tuition, and then we have our special schools and a number of those areas. So in the next few slides, we're going to get into the numbers to really look at what those dollars and cents look like. But before we do that, our next slide, if you will, is going to show the cost breakdown and the budget amounts by school, on the school-based level. As you know, as a former Abbott district, and is an SDA district now, we're required to budget on a school-based level with monies going to each of the schools dependent on their enrollment. The largest dollars of 12% of the overall contribution to the school-based budget is going to Eastside High School with just over $10 million. And then as you'll see, the next column there, we have the percentage of the general fund budget that's going to there, to those schools as well. Next slide, please. And this slide may be rather small to see, but this is also going to be available on the district's website as well. as well. Some of the numbers that we're looking at for a regular program for instruction, we have just over $9.2 million. Our bilingual instruction, $545,000. Our community service program is of $371,000. Our undistributed expenditure is at $96 million. And again, as I mentioned, this includes our child study team, our technology, our operation and maintenance. Our overall capital outlay of $1.6 million. This includes dollars to upgrade our security camera system across the district, as well as other operational expenses and other operational equipment for our facilities department as well. On the next slide, we have the continuation of our adult education program and the area of some of our biggest expenditures, which are our tuition payments. Our tuition payments are our charter schools and Renaissance schools. Our charter schools will be receiving approximately $58 million. And our Renaissance schools will be receiving approximately $129 million next year. And in regards to the school-based budgets, as a district, we're required to supply and offset some of that school-based funding with $81 million for next year. One of the decreases that we saw this year was our decrease in our preschool aid from the state. And this largely is due to the reduction in enrollment for our preschool students. So if anyone knows any three or four-year-olds not enrolled in our preschool program, I would encourage everyone to speak out to their relatives, their parents, their guardians, to have them enroll for the 2324 school year. Next slide, please. And these are just some of our grant dollars, looking at our federal projects, as well as our special revenue funds, which are our grant funds of $137 million. Overall, our grand total budget proposed for next year is $514 million total. And this includes our operating expenditures, as well as our grant funds that are received from the federal government. Next slide, please. So here, going back to our tuition payments that support the charter and Renaissance schools, 50% of our operating budget, even though we budget for that internally as a district, 50% automatically goes out the door to our charter and Renaissance partners. As I mentioned, with the Renaissance schools receiving $125 million and charter just over $58 million. And next left slides, please. So supporting a balanced budget, we had to make sure that our total net appropriations equalize our net revenue, which we were successfully able to do, for a total operating budget of $376.5 million for the 2324 school year. And our final slide, this includes our special revenue funds, which are our grant funds, our Title I funding and other various title funds of $137 million, bringing our total district budget for 2324 to $514.3 million. And again, this information, as well as the user-friendly budget and advertised budget, are available on the district's website for anyone's review and questions that can be directed through email to me if you so choose. Thank you. And again, I'll turn it over to the Superintendent.
Thank you. Thank you so much. At this time, we can transition back to the stage. I will, as I shared before, our presentation is curtailed, but you can check the district website if you want to take a look at any of the slides that are there. Anything that was not shared this evening will be shared at next month's board meeting for me. Thank you so much for your attention, and we are excited to share the news of where we stand with regard to our budget. At this time, I will turn it over to our Board President or his designee to share their list of retirees.
Yes, thank you, Madam Superintendent. We do apologize for coming in the end, but you know, we altered our schedule to meet the needs of our young people. But I would like to acknowledge our retirees, Ms. Deborah Hill, paraprofessional A, 1.1, 25 years and three months. Ms. Xena Ray, paraprofessional A, 1.1, 28 years. Gary Shannon, teacher elementary, 22 years. Cheryl Holmes, paraprofessional, pardon me, paraprofessional, 22 years and eight months. Dolly Comer, is that Conor or Comer? Connor, I'm sorry. Name is as good as gold. Teacher, 31 years. And Julia Henderson, school nurse, 28 years and five months. On behalf of the Advisory Board Education and School District, we want to thank them and please just give them a hand for their years of service to our community, and thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you so much, Board President. Thank you. At this time, I will actually turn it over to our Board Secretary to present the agenda items.
Thank you, Superintendent. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, I present to you this evening our Business Office Agenda Items, which I'm happy to say includes the award of a bid to Refresh Laundry here in Camden to help support our student attendance. We believe using a voucher program through working with Refresh Laundry will help us to promote student attendance through cleaning uniforms and other clothes and items that may be needed for our students. So I want to thank Mr. Davis, who was here tonight, for submitting a bid for that purpose. So that will be on the agenda for award this evening, along with our other resolutions and Business Office Items, including our bill list totaling $39,968,859.4. Superintendent, I'll turn it back to you.
Yes, thank you, Board Secretary. At this time, Board President, are there any comments or questions from board members?
Any commented questions? I just want to say congratulations. He's local, the kind of what we were talking about this evening. So we want to definitely say that to Mr. Davis there. We appreciate you. And I just want to make a real quick comment. I had a conversation with one of the parents that was out when I was on my way to the restroom, and I don't want to underscore, and I think he just kind of had a, you know, misunderstanding about my statements, and I just want to reiterate. I told him when I went back, I would reiterate the fact that I do not want to underscore our young people being involved in showing their voices, and that means everything. I encourage that. I know everybody up here. Encourage our young people being engaged. And my comments weren't about them, but my comments of being a leader in the community is to make sure our young people look at things from both sides. Being here for some years, you know, if I've seen instances and not, and not in this instance, and I just want to say their voices tonight were very persuasive. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And at this time, since there are no comments or questions from board members, I will move forward in accordance with the powers vested in the State District Superintendent under Title 18A. I hereby approve today's Superintendent's Agenda Items and Business Office Agenda Items. At this time, I'll turn it back over to our Board Secretary for adjournment.
Thank you, Superintendent. At this time, I'll open the floor for motion to adjourn this March meeting as of 8:34 PM.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, all opposed. Hearing no opposition, the meeting is now adjourned at 8:34 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out and have a safe drive home.